Is it the meat? I eat. I eat meat all the time. The grilled chicken, same.
Alright, it's seven o'clock, this is just third. Welcome you all to the plate for you today. Would you join? United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all. Alright.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Arina.
Here.
Mr. Fishani.
Here.
Mr. Jarbina.
Here.
Mr. Kozel.
Here.
Mr. Micalton.
Here.
Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mr. Zellman.
Here.
Okay, we've got... Actually, we're gonna change this a little bit. Head Webster Road pole barn. Are they here? You guys here? That's you guys?
Yeah, he did request that he...
Okay, yeah, okay. Danny, what we do is gonna say that this gentleman's wife has got some issues. She's gotta get back to the doctor. So take number one.
And number two.
And then bolt for number two, and then we'll go up to Webster.
Got it.
Jersey Mike's sign located 975 Ridge Road, applicant Steve Stanley with vital signs is requesting sign approval for Jersey Mike's to install a 22 square foot building mounted sign on the rear facade associated with Jersey Mike's sub shop. A 2.37 acre parcel located in MC medium intensity commercial district under the code of town Webster.
Good evening. First off, thank you again for letting me jump up here real quick. So yeah, we are proposing a building mounted sign to be mounted up over the back door on the south side of the plaza at Shoe Craft and Gray's Road. It'll be made, the back of the sign will be made out of ACM or otherwise known as die bond. Then we'll be having a digital print that will consist of blue and the red colors that you see on the sign. Also, and that digital print will be since 1956 and the word subs. Jersey Mike's will be a, will consist of half inch white PVC with a digital red print on the face of the letters. The sign will also be mounted to the building using six to eight tap con screws to drill into the masonry of the building. And the sign will sit flush mounted to the back of the building there. You can see that we will be mounting the sign 12 foot, six inches from Gray over the back door. On top of the building mounted sign, we're asking to be able to change out the two lexan panels that are on the brown mounted monument sign out front near the stoplight at the corner of Bridge and Shoe Craft.
Now that sign that you have up by the road, will that go into the monument site?
Correct, those...
I know, I seen one out there that's not...
Yeah, the lexan panels are interchangeable in the brick structure that's there. So all we do is open up the retainer, take the old panels out, slide the new panels in.
Okay, then the sign that's there now, or was last week or so, then we're gone.
I'm not sure.
Well, there's a sign out there.
For Jersey Mike's?
Yeah, I think it was a temporary sign that looked like it was out there.
Yes, I'm sure once the new lexan panels are in the monument, I'm sure we can talk with the owner or manager for that location about removing the sign that was there. So...
Is there a sign in front of the building?
Correct.
Do we need a variance for a second sign?
Yes, we did receive a variance for the zoning board on April 12th.
Yeah. There were other ones on the back also?
Yes, and the other ones are also much larger in square footage. And they're also lit. Our sign is non-lit and considerably smaller in square footage. I believe it's 22 square feet.
Alright, anybody any issue with this?
It's pretty common. Simple signs.
I'm sorry?
Does the landlord have to clean up with the sides if there's a smaller signboard up there?
No, I believe that there's no pre-existing, do you wanna call it shadowing from any other existing signs that were there previously?
Okay. Anybody?
No.
Want to do a secret or anything?
Town of Webster planning board considered request by applicant Steve Stanley with vital signs to install a 22 square foot building mounted sign for Jersey's much located in 975 Ridge Road on a 2.37 acre parcel having SPL number 079-15-1-18.1. The planning board classifies proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C9 and stating bar mile following review regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second. All in favor, Mr. Van Baeck?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Somebody wanna make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval for the Jersey Mike's sign located at 975 Ridge Road for a rear, a rear sign, a sign on the rear of the building, non-lit, 22 square feet. And also for the two monument signs to replace existing signs out there.
Can you mean a second?
Second.
A motion of second all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next project.
Bolter Industrial Park sign located 655 Bassett Road, applicant Steve Stanley of vital signs requesting sign approval associated with the construction of a 35 square foot monument sign at Bolter Industrial Park on a 25.92 acre parcel located in IN industrial district under the code of town Webster.
Yes, so for this sign, it'll be an aluminum cabinet, 84 inches in width, and a total of 29, I'm sorry, 31 inches in height. I'm sorry, 60, a total of 61 inches in height from Gray. We will be using, as I mentioned, an aluminum base cabinet with two steel poles to directly into the ground. We will be digging two holes using cement tubes and then setting those two beams into concrete. The copy bolter will be made out of flat cut aluminum eighth inch and six, excuse me, 655 and Webster New York. And Webster NY will be a vinyl applique that will be mounted directly to the cabinet.
This is all lit?
This is non-lit.
Oh, it's non-lit?
Correct.
So is this taking replacement?
This will be replacing the sign that is currently there, yeah.
Josh needs everything, okay?
Yes, it's significantly under their allowable square footage. As long as they place it 25 feet from the right away.
25 feet from the right away as in the, as in basket road, correct?
Correct.
And 25 feet from the...
Correct, and for the record, we will be installing that sign exactly where the old sign is, which is 300 feet from the road.
Okay. Alright, anybody any questions? Bolt is not replacing the other one. Got the address out, that's good. Okay. Want to do a secret or anything?
Town of Webster planning board considered request by applicant Steve Stanley with vital signs to construct a 35 square foot monument mounted sign for Bolter Industrial Park sign located at 655 Bassett Road on a 25.92 acre parcel having SPL number 066.06-1-7.1. The planning board classifies proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C9 and stating bar mile following review regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, we have a motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll give it them. Motion for the sign?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bolter Industrial Park sign located 655 Bassett Road, applicant Steve Stanley of vital signs requesting associated with the construction of a 35 square foot monument sign for the Bolter Industrial Park is applied for.
Second. A motion of second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you again, I appreciate it.
No, that's okay.
Good night.
Happy to accommodate.
Thank you.
Good luck.
375 Webster Road pole barn located 375 Webster Road, applicant by God is and Darren Bay are requesting preliminary site plan approval associated with the construction of a 20 by 30 pole barn with an eight foot by 30 side covered overhang on a 3.85 acre parcel located in an R-1 senior family residential zone, residential zoning district under the code of town Webster.
Yes, sir.
Members, thank you very much for having us speak first, we greatly appreciate it. I have supplied some additional information since the last time I was here. I did provide an elevation for the proposed pole barn with the measurement, the height, the width, and the overhang which is indicated on the map which I supplied. Also, I did like to mention that unfortunately, the topographical map that I presented to the board, I certainly do apologize the fact that the original house was transposed over that 2011 plan. And it actually does not show the fact that after that home was built, all of the basement dirt that was there was actually put on the proposed site that we have the pole barn. And unfortunately, it did not reflect that in the topographical map because it was, it was, it was put together prior to the house being built. I did also give you the setback information of where the 20 foot easement would be. The barn would be situated four feet from that 20 foot easement. I did provide some photographs also of the site where that dirt is currently leveled, pretty much leveled that area out and would give it the proper drainage also. Fortunately, it drains, it slopes a little bit slightly now, so it'll drain right down into that lower portion and actually probably a little bit into the pond, which we do have a back pond there. I do have a, I did provide a sample of the siding which I have on my hand along with the roofing material. If any of the board members are able to look at it. But once again, my wife and I, Dean, certainly do apologize for coming here the first time and not being prepared with the proper map.
Looking at this drawing, is the dimension add here now for the pole barn from the lat line? Probably isn't, I'm not seeing it yet.
It's 24 feet from the lat line.
Okay, you've got that on something, right?
Yep.
That's 24 is the golden. I'm looking for that. It looks like four feet.
Four feet from the 20 foot set pad line?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, that's your set pad line.
Yes.
Alright, gotcha then, alright, good. Okay. Yeah, well, the last time it showed the elevation dropping off, but now you've got photographs showing how that's all been leveled off and so forth.
Yes.
So that makes a difference.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Alright, these are kinda the colors you're planning on using, I guess?
Pardon?
These are kinda the colors you're using?
Yes, yes, we actually hired an Amish gentleman down in, down in the Indian area.
Uh huh.
So we're quite sure that's gonna be very well constructed.
Yeah, I think it will. Alright, anybody any questions on this now?
Is there a barn on the property now?
Yes, there is a barn, it's an historic barn, it was built in 1900. We have, right now currently, it's housing two tractors. One is a 1951 Ford 8N and the other one is a brand new tractor with a whole bunch of implements that we got so we can take care of the property. We have a lawn, a very big snow blower, a grass eder, a lawn sprayer, and a fortune we had in place to put it and we certainly don't wanna keep it on the property. So the pole barn which is set back, so as you can see from the drawings, adjacent to the Webster cemetery and in back of the furthest northwest corner of the house, it's virtually, you won't even be able to see it from the road and we can hide all of that equipment and keep it out of sight.
Does he need a variance for a second out of the building?
No.
Yes, he received one.
Oh, he, wait, yeah, you can have a shed, I guess, right? If you have a pole barn, you can have a shed.
You can have one shed and one accessory.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. You guys have variance, so correct on this?
Yes.
So it's not very... So it sets in the back, so basically everything conforms to what the code calls. Alright, anybody? This is a preliminary, so if there's anybody here wishing to speak either for or against, one. Okay, going back to the board, post-publicary, comments, anything, anybody?
No.
Alright. Alright, wanna do a secret or anything? Moving on.
Town of Webster planning board considered request by applicant Roger Al and Darren and Pete to construct a 20 by 30 pole barn with an eight foot by 30 foot side covered overhang on a 3.85 acre parcel having SPL number 050.03-1-34.2 located at 375 Webster Road. The planning board classifies proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C12 for the stating bar mile following review regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Motion. My motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Okay, this has to be now a motion for an accessory building?
I'll make a motion for a primary pool for 375 Webster Road pole barn. Lots restricted to an accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented on the plan. The placement of the building should conform to setback requirements. The building should not be placed nearer to the front of the property than the rear line of the main building or residence on a lot. No point in the building will be higher than the existing structure. No commercial use shall occur on the parcel. The accessory building should be used for personal use only as defined by the code. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deputed planning board expire on May 3rd, 2023. It should comply with all requirements of any state, county, and town agency. All site workers being compliance to the standards of the town of Webster. Subject to all engineering and government approvals. Subject to all appropriate government fees. Subject to resolution of final improvements. That's a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second motion.
Mr. Micalton?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jarbina?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Mr. Fishani?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the final approval of 375 Webster Road pole barn to include all the stipulations in the preliminary.
You use it for basically check 225-36 to conform to, that's the code, that covers everything you're, you're writing this basically.
That's a motion.
Okay. You should have a set of drawings, construction drawings for the building inspector?
Yes, we'll have those, yes.
You'll have those?
Absolutely.
Alright, okay, good. That was, this is the flag, make a motion for that. Me, sir.
And that was Mr. Mixel.
Okay, good.
Mr. Micalton?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jarbina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arina?
Aye.
Alright, you're all set.
Thank you. On behalf of my wife Jane who's here tonight, we certainly wanna thank the board for the courtesy which they gave us. Especially coming from New Jersey.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Dr. Eager, Dr. Eager and Cole Desmond sign located 766 Ridge Road, applicant Ian McDonald requesting sign approval to replace an existing mounted freestanding monument sign on a 0.25 acre parcel located in the CL commercial outdoor storage district under the code of town Webster.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Ian McDonald from Historic Sign and Restoration. I'm a traditional sign maker, I work primarily in wood, redwood, cedar, that kinda thing. This sign that I'm proposing for Dr. Eager's office is to replace the existing sign that's there. Not being terribly familiar with town code, I decided to stick with the square foot that I assume they already, hopefully, got a permit for back in the eighties. That's, so what I'm doing is I'm changing the layout, this is gonna be more of a vertical layout. It's twin two inch thick carved panels made out of high density urethane. And when you're looking at this sign, the background is gonna be recessed and in two steps it'll be recessed. The first step back is the shape that you see within the border. The second is that circle where the tooth is embedded. So what I'm doing is I'm gonna have dimensional letters for the word dentistry with a prism face. I'm gonna gild those letters in 23 karat gold leaf on a black background. The circle where the tooth is, like I said, is recessed, but that tooth I'm gonna cut out out of individual pieces, round it, that'll all be painted and it'll be dimensional, it'll be raised off the surface. Then the three nameplates you see, those are removable so that when they, when Dr. Eager retires, they get a new young person in, they can put their name on there. I'm going to put it on a pedestal style base and that'll be on six by six large posts that you won't see because I'm gonna build that skirt around it. Now that skirt, that skirt's gonna be kinda cool because you see on the right and the left, those two panels are raised and that center panel with the stanchions going down, that's recessed. So if you picture this, that middle panel's gonna be pulled back and those yellow lines come forward to the same plane as the right and left gray.
Pretty fancy sign. Now, the location of this, that's the only question, is, was there a variance for the location of that, Josh, to check?
So we looked in our records, the only variance on file that we found was for the color of the sign. It wasn't for the location. So, yeah, we're a little unclear on the location of the sign in proximity to the street.
I got an email from Catherine earlier and my apologies for getting back so late. But I cruised out there tonight and I took a measurement from where the existing sign is to where the apron of the street is. And it's 23 feet. Now he's got plenty of feet, you know, to the building still, we've gotta add to that. I wasn't real sure what the setback was even supposed to be.
Well, it has to be on your property, from your per property line, it needs to be 25 feet onto the property.
And property line means where the streets, aprons, shoulder ends?
Your property begins, that's right.
Then we're two feet off right now. So when I install the new one, I can easily move it two, three feet in closer to the building to comply.
Okay, so that would be a guess. Suppose, suppose we approve it, approve the sign, but prior to you getting a permit to put it in, you verify the location of it, how's that?
Well, if you're seeing it tonight, I realize it seemed like it was pretty close. And the power out there, the lighting, so it'd be no big deal to move the lighting two, three feet north in order to comply with setbacks.
Be nice to be a new... You must have a tape location map of the house or something, the building and the structure, you know?
Well, yeah, Catherine sent me one and I took a look at it and I couldn't really zoom in very well just because it was a computer file. But I'm sure Dr. Eager's got that also. But I think to be safe, we should just plan on putting the sign in two feet. I mean, we're not talking a huge amount of, I mean, I'm gonna go another three feet in.
You're going away on the road.
That's it. Can you use that?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The right of way, like there's a power pole or something like that, right on the right end. But this parcel, I think the town should have, this one's a guy that came in a lot of it for...
Yeah, the dish in the front there?
Yeah, the dish in the front of the handicap, but I just, there is a drawing, I thought it was like, you know.
Okay, so, okay, let's, let's move on, yeah. Suppose we do that, you guys okay with that? You're gonna approve the sign, but just before you get the permit, can you check up the town or the owners of the property or something? Look at a map and just make sure that you're back 25 feet from your front, yeah, front line, okay?
What's gonna happen with the light?
Wouldn't be the first time I've had it.
Is that there?
The light, what's gonna happen with that?
With lighting on it or not?
Well, the lighting will stay, depending on where the sign falls at the end will determine where we move the electric and the lamps that are there now. That's not my scope of work, I'm sure Dr. Eager will hire an electrician to handle that.
So it's just apply that to it?
Yeah, the exterior halo gens, I mean, they're not, they're not fabulous, I'm gonna recommend you do something with a little more of a wash and something that's not quite as bright. This, the sign is really, there's a lot of dimension to it and with the gold leaf on the letters, it's really, it's a really cool look. And the shadows and the lighting are pretty important or at nighttime it looks redneck.
Okay. Alright.
Town of Webster planning board considered request by applicant Ian McDonald to construct or to replace an existing 19 square foot freestanding monument sign located at...
766 Ridge Road in a 0.25 acre parcel, having ESPN number 079.17-1-9. The town board classifies proposed action as a type Q action under section 617.5C9 in the State Department of Law and Order Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to review.
Can you motion, you second? Somebody second? All in favor, she can say. Alright, so the motion for the approval, we're going to make the motion for the approval, and then we'll just put a stipulation in there, that prior to a building permit being issued, the applicant has to verify that he is within the 25-foot setback on the property.
And that would be based on current surveys that the property owner should supply.
Yeah, should, should, somebody somewhere along that.
Yeah, I'm sure it's fine with the property. And then I'll contact Josh to verify that.
Yep, you can do that. Then you can mark it on the drawing where it is, and then they do an inspection of it, they know where it is, right? Are we, somebody want to make a motion to that? Well, that was a motion.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Shani?
Alright, we're accepting, we should run into the science itself, too. The, as presented, just put it as presented, there's nothing more, I'll show you. Okay, add that on to it again, alright. Aye.
Mr. Arena? Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. Alright, move on.
ATR Fitness Sign located at 865 Ridge Road, applicant Ian McDonald's requesting signed approval to replace an existing 28-square foot freestanding monument sign on a 1.10 acre parcel, having located in a MC industrial, medium industrial commercial district under the quarter town of Webster.
Hello, everyone. Okay, this is an existing sign where the, and it included my package, the old sign at the front of the building, Free's Company on Ridge Road. Now, what we're proposing to do is keep that structure intact, paint the perimeter of it and the face of it, which, by the way, I already done, just because I wanted to clean it up. We're going to build a skirt around the bottom of it, made out of overlay plywood with ribs that are raised. The address, our six-inch letters, they're cut out of half-inch PVC, and they're stud mounted on the bottom, kind of raised off the surface. Face of the sign is multi-layered, circle weight you see is cut out of one-inch-thick high-density urethane, and then the ATR is cut out of three-quarter inch PVC. Now, I'm painting those, the weight piece will be airbrushed a little bit, but the letters we painted and raised off the surface. The two side barbells are a little thinner, they go back, they don't come forward quite as far on the sign base, they're a little more subtle, they're airbrushed with details to make it look like there's a few of them. And then that panel below that says fitness, that is cut out of two-inch-thick high-density urethane, and the word fitness is carved into it. What am I doing with that? Oh, and I'm gilding that in 23 karat gold leaf, that's going to be cool, real estate.
23 karat? Can you make it 20, 20?
I'm sorry, it doesn't come that way. Nothing but the best for my clients, though, let me tell you.
Yeah, I can see.
So the word personal training, I'm cutting that out of three-quarter inch PVC, I'm painting it, I'm stud mounting it, so it also will look like it's floating off that surface. If you're familiar with that sign, it's got kind of a stucco finish to it, so these pieces will look really neat against that, especially with that big border around the perimeter of it. So, that's, that's that one.
Yeah. Now, this will be upland afterward, or?
Uh, yeah, they have lights out there currently, I believe, I believe. Yeah, I can see it from the first, or they do a plan.
Okay. Alright, are you writing any issues?
No, it looks good.
Alright.
Town of Webster Plan and Board Consider Request by Applicant Ian McDonald to replace an existing 24-square foot freestanding monument sign located at 865 Ridge Road in a 1.10 acre parcel, having ESPN number 079.17-1-10. The town board classifies proposed action as a type Q action under section 617.5C9 in the State Department of Law and Order Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to review.
Can you second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, so you can go ahead.
Aye.
Okay, motion for the approval, second?
I'll make a motion to approve the ATR Fitness Sign located 865 Ridge Road, applicant Ian McDonald's requesting the sign approval to replace an existing 28-square foot freestanding monument sign, parcel located in MC Commercial District, as applied for.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Alright, I guess you're all set.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Hey, have a good night. Yeah, go ahead.
Lime Light Automotive located 1173 to 1175 Ridge Road, applicant Steve Smith requesting preliminary final site plan approval to construct a 2,300-square-foot building addition with the additional landscaping installed and parking reconfiguration and expanded on a 1.2 acre parcel located in MC being intensely commercial district under the quarter town of Webster.
Good evening, I'm Pete Forman with Marathon Engineering, I have Steve Smith, owner of Lime Light Automotive. We're here for the Lime Light Automotive project and the relocation. Project is 1173 and 1175 Ridge Road, near Jackson Road. The property currently has two residential buildings which are occupied and over named. Pol barn is also on site, which we're proposing to demolish. And there's vacant commercial building, which can be on the new Lime Light Automotive location allowed. We're also proposing a 2,300-square-foot addition to the commercial building. Lime Light Automotive is a business that installs aftermarket accessories, truck bedliners, bedcaps, window tinting, remote starts, vinyl graphics, things like that. They do not do any gas mechanical work, engine work, body work, muffler, oil changes. Hours of operation are Monday to Friday, nine to six, Saturday, ten to five, and they are not open on Sundays. The main existing building will be utilized for offices and a showroom for their products. The bays and the new addition are oriented such that the westernmost bays can be used for pull-through for their turnaround work, so that's, these two windows here, there are two old red doors here, so they can just pull through, get the work done, and it's kind of a, almost like a drive-through for windows to take in some of the workup items. The project has 33 parking spaces, including four spaces reserved for the residential building upon Ridge Road. There's a dumpster enclosure at the southwest corner of the parking facility, and we're proposing lighting on the south and the western side of the parking facility. These are LED fixtures, are dark sky compliant, and have houseside shields to limit the light spill to neighboring properties. For screening in the rear to residential neighborhood, we're proposing some additional landscaping, native species, some deciduous sandconiferous trees, also a six-foot-high solid vinyl fence. In addition to the physical construction, we are subdividing the western residential property here. So, that, that building will become its own lot, this was at the request of the town for tax and emergency services purposes. We're also going to be removing a shed that's located over the sanitary sewer abatement and line. The project required several variances, a use variance for not, for use not specifically permitted within the MC zoning, an area variance for the size of the residential lot, we're creating an area variance for the site setback to the existing building, and area variance for the buffer to the residential zoning district. We appeared at the April 12 ZB meeting, and all these variances were granted. We did receive some comments from the town apartments league this past Friday, we don't anticipate any, any problems, but meetings or gatherings are addressing these comments, the big one being the need for a SWIP report, we are disturbing over 25,000 square feet. We do have a time constraint in the project, Steve is looking to close on the property by May 30th, that's conditional on site plan approval. So we are planning on submitting the SWIP in the next couple days, and to Mary for her review, do you have time for this review? We would like to request that we are tabled until the next meeting on the 17th to give her time. We still would like to hear your comments on this, this kind of a late shell, and I just talked to Mary and Josh late this afternoon. So again, we'd like to still get your, your comments and concerns, and be able to address them at the next meeting. If you have any questions for us, let us know, and Steve is here to answer any questions about, about the business.
You got your variances for that, right?
Correct.
You see that, you're putting a fence in there?
Correct.
Fences?
Six-foot high.
Six-foot fence, landscaping?
Uh, yes.
And you may have a drone in there, showing that.
Yeah, there's landscaping plans, it's actually updated from this.
Yeah, there is, I got it. Now, what are you going to be doing there, solely, you were talking about leaving it gravel or something in there? Is that, you're blacktopping it, or what?
Yeah, we're blacktopping it, I don't remember talking about that as much, there was an issue with how far and extended, and into, towards the residential property, and we had just adjusted that in the last, in the zoning board. Other than that, it's always been, you know, planned to be paved, no curb, curving, we were going to do the back and west portion, just for runoff and stuff.
Curb cut is the same as, what's that, that's the same as?
Correct, we're not adjusting the.
They just, you isolated the parcel on Jackson Road.
Correct.
It's got a line there, so there's joint rest, re-rest there, it's totally separate entity?
Correct, and that, that lot size is substandard, and we're just seeing variants.
Yeah, okay. And drainage, well, what's the deal with that, do you have, have a plan for that, or?
So there is an existing pond, right now, all the stormwater is collected by inlets and, and directed to that pond, we are reducing the impervious by actually quite a bit, so there's going to be, you know, we're decreasing the runoff, so we're going to be reutilizing that pond, so.
Anybody have any issues with that? Is it bad?
Well, it's an area disturbance.
What's that?
They said the area is.
Uh, what are you, how are you about? Uh, 31,800. So under, under an acre, which is what we anticipated for you, that's what for the DDC.
Is it really more for this group to you, because it's not close to the site?
It is gravel in the back, but yes. Yeah. A line, you know, it's okay. Uh, yeah, it's broken asphalt and some gravel, so we're cleaning up edges and putting some property back up.
So it's coming up, or?
Correct. But we, we're still, we're disturbing, we want to put some new sub-bays down, so that's considered disturbed, so, letter of law, I guess we did SWIP.
So you're going to fill out a SWIP to report, you'll get that to Mary in the next couple days, is that it?
Correct, yeah.
Get that, or?
It's going to be in at the next meeting, which is in two weeks. Seventeenth, correct.
And then you can just do it four, maybe five.
That'd be great, yeah.
Same thing, either way, it's the same thing.
Yeah, so the, the SWIP is, we don't anticipate needing any post-construction practices, so no green infrastructure, you know, increasing the size of that pond, it's really documentation and demonstration, we're reducing the runoff.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, will I make a motion?
Make a motion, the table, the Lime Light Automotive, 1173, 1175, Ridge Road, to our May 17th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
So Jess, maybe we keep these drawings, this way we have the next meeting, if we have questions, we've got it.
Yeah, I don't think we have to actually update the drawings at all.
No, that's, we'll just keep them, this way we don't have to, the light, I would say, yeah.
Alright, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We'd like a quick, I guess. Yep.
Bellatera, South Division, Phase One, located southwest corner of South Slager Road, applicant Tom Thomas requesting site plan modification to allow for rental of the townhouse units currently under construction on an 83.8 acre parcel, having 66 individual, located in an FHR medium-high residential district under the quarter town of Webster.
Good evening, Mike Ritchie, Cost of Engineering here with Tom Thomas, the developer of the project. Just to clarify the agenda, and again, Josh, you're wrong, I'm correct, but we're not proposing any modification to the site plan per se, nothing that was approved by the town planning board in terms of the site development, it's a change. We're here more or less as good neighbors, part of the community, to discuss with the board the fact that the developer, Tom Thomas, would like to have the flexibility to sell or lease, depending on, on the market that's out there at that time. The subdivision map has been filed, so there are 66 individual tax account parcels that currently exist, and they'll be sold if the market warrants it, or they'll remain in the ownership of the Tremet Group until some time when they can be sold. The purpose of this, with prices going up, and inflation going up, and uncertainty in the market, it's Tom's intent to, to build all these units now, and also to recoup a lot of the upfront cost due to the infrastructure cost to first phase the subdivision. So, you know, because of that, we wanted to come to this board and discuss it with you, I don't know if leasing those, those units is in any way violating town code, but again, we wanted to discuss with you, and, you know, be good neighbors, so with that, we had to discuss this with you.
Well, we talked about it a little bit in the past, and I've talked to Tom about it, he's talked to Josh about it, too. Apparently, there's issues that conflict a little bit in the summer, I think, anyways, and I, and I don't know what the opposite side is, what the other thoughts are about it, but, if you own them all yourself, it's a dedicated road, the infrastructure, infrastructure and everything is town, and you build a place, my understanding is you'd be able to lease it, if you want to lease it, and if you've got two of them, or if you've got ten of them, you own them, you can lease them. If sales came available, I don't, I don't know where the issue would be, other than you'd sell it, the only thing I would think then, and I don't believe it's required, but I think something like that, if some were sold and some were leased, it'd have to be, it should be, you know, homeowners association or something formed at that point. I mean, I can't picture you own one unit down next door, you decide to put a roof on it and I don't, how do we resolve it, you know?
Right.
Or you do it on and I don't, you know, that kind, those are the kinds of things, you know how that goes.
Yeah, and again, you know, I think with it being on individual building basis, right, we're not talking about a homeowners association that's going to share in the cost of painting the road, but it's more, you know, again, I'm an attorney, so I'm not going to pretend to be one, but I think that's something that Tom could work out in, in order to comply with many rules and regulations.
But there's other thoughts in there, too, and, and.
Yeah, so.
Donna, is that, I can't see.
Yes.
So Donna, are you there? I can't see.
I'm behind the pole.
Oh, there you are, hi Donna.
Hi, Tony.
Maybe she could explain some of the, apparently, there were some issues at another project we had in town.
Yeah, we, you are correct in saying that there isn't anything in town code that explicitly limits the renting of units. However, I think after an internal meeting of several department heads last week, there's some concerns, because the project was approved under the assumption that it was going to be owner-occupied, so, once that rezoning took place and. So, once that rezoning took place and the approval process went down that road, a lot of things happened that wouldn't traditionally occur in a rental type community. One being that, you know, we've established a park district. The roads are all being built to town standards. Those are things and everything is proposed to be dedicated back to the town. So, we're not aware of any other situation in town where there are, you know, town dedicated roads and infrastructure and stormwater on management for a development that is essentially, you know, a mix of rental and ownership. So there's several concerns.
Sorry, I'm gagging out.
So, yeah, so basically, we're a little perplexed as to, you know, we certainly appreciate developers' desire for flexibility. However, we've already gone so far down this path that it presents other problems. And we're in technical pool, so.
I think Donna's kind of, you know, at the meeting the other day, I mean, it helps the board, you know, maybe it's all in the state.
There were a lot of comments that, you know, we've all been talking about what does this mean for the town? There's a lot of stakeholders, not only yourselves, but we have a highway department and I can't speak for them. They want to know about dedicated roads versus non-dedicated roads. We have.
Donna, excuse me. Take that mic a little closer to you, she's not picking you.
Close.
For everyone's sake, I'm sorry.
Right.
I don't know.
My name is Donna Comar. I'm the assessor for the town of Webster. Nice to meet you. It's a small world. And likewise here, Mr. Thomas, I don't think I've ever made before. So, so the highway department has its own perspective. The sewer department would have its perspective. You have the planning, you have the zoning, then there's the assessment, right? There's a lot of perspectives, the town engineer, building permits and that. From a collective point of view, we were trying to kind of get together and say, well, what is the best path forward for everyone? Unfortunately, I have, I have some history with the town of Webster in that there was a similar project kind of in their reverse standard. They had already set up all of these lines and where you're asking to leave the lines in, they had the lines in and it turned out that, like yourself, they began with expecting to sell them someday. Thirty years later, those properties are still, actually 66 properties, just like your own, right? They're all rented. They've never been sold. And along the line, along the lines, there became a problem with, well, you're a hybrid. You're not really set up to be privately sold, a joint and independent assessment parcels. And at the same time, you're renting them all. So you kind of can't have the cake and eat it too, in a sense. And I don't, I'm not suggesting that's what you were trying to do, but that's, that's a problem for the town. So you've already filed a subdivision map that looks familiar to me. There are 66 individual parcels which now, according to the assessment cycle, have 66 parcel identification numbers. I've issued 66 addresses to those. And there's three other parcels which the map indicated to be dedicated to us. I believe that Josh, those are the Parkland parcels, right? Okay, so, to the Parkland parcels, they're in the upper left corner of the, yeah, the three retention ponds. Yep, and then one there, either side of the road as it comes in there is at Bellatera itself.
Yes.
Yeah. And then you have the remaining lands, which is all the other lands for future development. So there's 70 pieces of property here altogether. So there's 70 addresses, there's 70 tax identification numbers. And I will be sending you 70 change notices very soon as the assessment roll is being filed in May. On there, you will also notice there's easements going into the town. We can't speak for the sewer department, but all of those things go into play when a subdivision is set up with the intent to be saleable. Which is, what you stated originally was your intention. So when, when properties are saleable, they have all of those features to them. But by contrast, and I thought we might have a screen, but you don't have a screen available. And you can think of Water View at Willow Point. If you can think of Waverly Woods, right? Webster Green. Those are large tract parcels with multiple buildings on them and they're all set up individual, they're all set up for individual rentals. But it's one tax identification parcel and the roads are private. Utilities are privately owned and maintained. And that's, that's how we know that they're going to be rentals. So, so you want to, you are set up as individual ownership. But at the same time, you want to have the benefits then and also the responsibility of being the landlord. So there's a problem there from an assessment point of view in that I don't assign addresses to every rental unit in town. And we wouldn't have assigned individual parcel identification numbers to every rental unit. And I want to stop short of calling these apartments, but they, there are duplexes, as I understand, that you're planning to put up, right? Townhouse style buildings. But they, but they wouldn't be individually owned. So a lot of things have already been put in motion. And I think if the other departments were here, they would be able to advocate for themselves as to how everything's already gone in motion in a certain direction. You're kind of trying to turn around a speeding locomotive. You can't turn that around on a dime necessarily. So if, if your desire would be to rent them, it would be my perspective and I think the collective perspective of the other stakeholders in the town for the other department heads, then go ahead and change your plan. You know, you have that option where there's zoning and I can't speak for zoning, Josh, so chime in. But you can change your plan so that the roads aren't dedicated, so that there aren't the easements and all that. And I understand, it's easy for me to say and that has simple meaning to me, it's a short sentence, and it has a whole lot of weighty meaning to you, right? I know there's a lot of weight in that sentence and I know there's a lot of meaning to it. But to have the hybrid is a very complicated situation from all of those perspectives.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
What would be the difference if I owned it or if you owned it? If you bought one for me and you wanted to lease it? What would be the difference? I mean, if all the different town facilities were to be the same? It wouldn't be any different?
Well, they're set up for private ownership, so all the public hearings and that now kind of stepping on Josh's toes a little bit. But the, the public hearings that were put forth was presented to the public as a horse of a different color, if I can use a cliche. So it was presented to the public and all of the conversations that have happened up to this point have been lead up to private ownership, okay? From an, from an assessment point of view, we just don't individually value rental units. But that's what you're asking me to do.
Well, no, in other words, if I, if I owned it or you owned it? If you bought one in there and you wanted to lease it?
Yeah. Well, then there would be a sale on the property and I would have some data to use to judge the value and it would just be like,
That's what I'm hoping.
Like Providence or Tallahassee Trail or any other subdivision.
We're planning on being an individual opponent on every unit. But I might, but to build the whole project, I'm planning on doing it myself, you know, just building it. So I would be the owner of each unit, of which I myself. But if you bought one in there and you wanted to lease it, you would have to lease it.
That is true.
Totally true. There's nothing in a town code that says an individually owned property can't be rented. And if you're going to be the individual owning the property, I don't see any reason why you can't rent your property instead of selling your property. But I understand where you're coming from because you're going to be putting up buildings and, what is it, four, six units in each building?
Two, two units.
Two units in each building. If you can't sell one, you sold one, but you can't sell the other one, you have the option of renting it as an individual owner. This is different than what we did at Willow Point when Mark Ford came in and they completely restructured the whole thing to one tax town number. He's not asking for that. He's saying, I will leave everything the way it is, but I want the option to be able to rent out the unit. And he's going to sell you, you've got an HOA, right? Are you going to do it?
We haven't.
No? Who's going to maintain the property?
It would be the owner, which would be me.
The owner is to maintain the property.
Or the other.
So, you know, then, you know, there's where the, if you're going to maintain the property versus the renter maintaining the property, that's a different story. If the renter's going to maintain the property and he's going to let it go to hell, no, you know, that's not good. So I would say that maybe a stipulation would be that any units that you own would maintain until the time you're sold.
Well, I think they, we talked about it a little bit. And I mentioned, I talked about that too. If, if that's the scenario and down the road he starts to sell a couple of them, then I think there'd have to be a stipulation that there would have to be a HOA for them. Because some would be private, you know, you know, tenants moving in or owners, homeowners moving in. You should have an HOA.
I think it's a good idea to have an HOA.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
You know what I'm saying? Well, that's what we talked about, but see now, I don't know, I'm missing that some of what Donna's saying, right? And I hear what you're saying, but I'm not.
Are you saying an HOA just for the while or something?
No, no, I'm saying as long as he owns one, if he plans on keeping them, but let's say, let's say five or 10 years from now. A year or two, months from now, he decides to sell one or two of them off. Now you're creating an issue where homeowners are in there and you get to the situation where who's going to fix the roof? Who's going to roll the lawn? Who's going to get here in the driveway? You know, I want, I want to replace half of my roof, so you live in the other, you say, I don't know. Bottom of my roof's okay, it isn't leaking. Now you've got what, two different roofs? You know, you need to, you should be, should have an HOA in a situation like that.
That's something we probably missed.
That's, well.
In the beginning.
No, not really.
When you've got two units, I mean, like you said, if the whole thing needs a roof, it already happened, it's going to be time.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, I don't know how we're going to go with this thing here.
Well, I can't think of any other rental community where the town owns the utility infrastructure and the town takes dedication to the road. Can you, Josh?
This is kind of rental community. So K Y C building you a plan.
They're just saying the way it was, and that's, that's my point. Because that's where Water View started, long before my time with the town. I've been here 17 years now. But that was long before my time, but that's where they started and it was exactly the same thing. They set it up that way with all the individual units. The reason they were before you was to erase them because they clearly were committed to a rental situation then. But the difference here is that the roads were never dedicated to the town. There was some undoing of some easements and things for utilities and that.
Yeah, that, when that got approved, when that got approved over there at Willow Point, I remember specifically asking that question to them too. Are these for sale or for rental?
And then for sale.
And it could have gone either way. Some might be for rent, some might be for sale.
No, they were definitely for sale.
Yeah.
As I, I had to research that.
And then, that was, that's what was coming at the meeting at the time.
Then he came in and he wanted everything on one.
Yeah.
And they made it a complete rental unit, a rental community. This is not a rental community. This is a privately owned community. I believe this should have an HOA. But I certainly see no problem in him being able to run out units that he hasn't sold. As long as, you know, you've got an HOA that's being maintained. It's, yeah, it's, it's a dedicated road, dedicated sort of, they are units available for sale. They're not going to be units for rental only.
With all due respect, they're not available for sale until such time as that HOA is structured and that's exactly where Willow Point left it, half done, hybrid, which is what became the issue. So, the problem with a hybrid is you're not really one and you're not really the other, so you're not in compliance with anything.
Does it year intend? Does it year intend at any point in time, or is there a margin in parcels?
No. They want to keep them all individual tax accounts.
So it's something that's assured. It's for.
Yes.
They'll always see up there as a matter of change, but these ones stay the change.
It should be the safest, any subdivision in the town. Dedicated roads, dedicated sewers. Everything should be, every, same as every identical subdivision. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. But our plans are to keep it an actual subdivision.
I think it is correct that it should have had an HOA in the beginning because the issue of who fixes the house or the roof.
Yeah.
Already exists.
I'm in agree, I'm in agreement with that.
You know, 100% of that. If both are sold, there's no guarantee of both owners will be currently.
Yeah, I would be well informed.
It's current existence.
I'd be willing to agree to form an HOA before any unit gets sold.
That, that would be something we'd have to, because legally, he doesn't have to do that. He doesn't have to have an HOA with two unit apartments, but.
But is there anything?
Yeah, I think you should have one there, yeah.
Is there anything we can put in place on those, so that says that they can't bother?
See, I don't, I hear what Donna's saying, but I don't know what the alternative is. Don't take dedication to it, then what do you do with it? Just leave it as a private road and private everything. And then, so then, let's, I think I'm wrong here. So let's say we do that, then in three or four years, he decides to do like Willow Point, decides to want to sell some.
But it's not what Willow Point did. Willow Point was not going to sell.
What happens in this case though? It's reversed basically.
Well, you, you would have the first ever rental community with dedicated infrastructure that the rest of the taxpayers are paying for, which is actually part of a private endeavor.
Yeah, no, let's say, let's say the town doesn't take dedication to it, you know, like what you're saying. You make it a project, you know? You own them all, you can rent them all. Each one's still got its own tax count. But then what happens if he wants to sell?
In my assessor world, if they were to commit to a rental situation, which is what they're describing to you now, that would be removing all the lines, just like Water View did. Remove the lines, put in your private roads, keep and maintain the easements to the infrastructure and other utilities. That, that would be completely a rental, but you've got a little bit of both. And I wish we had a screen and we could, we could pop something up. Because when you see it on a tax map, it's very clear what is a rental community and what is a community with significant HOA lands that surrounds everything, where the tax map parcel just identifies the footprint of the building and the most majority of the greater parcel then is HOA land in between all the other buildings.
So let's the president, Mr. Thomas, from tomorrow sell every parcel in that subdivision to himself for a dollar. Now he has his entire subdivision sold. He is, he owns the deed to title to every one of those parcels on it.
I think he already does under, is a member of your LLC, Bellatera Group LLC, I believe is you.
Well, right, now we're not the owner, but the developer, the lead unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he already is the owner.
But you were just saying that.
But when, when we say, see, you need individuals, individuals, not common ownership among all the, all the parcels. So you wouldn't accomplish anything by your just design.
He, as an individual, could buy from his LLC every parcel and then he releases for a buck. It's about $67. He now individually owns every one of those parcels. He builds a house on it, rents out, sells it. What's the provision to do there? There's nothing.
Nothing, and I understand the juncture you're at, but I also understand if the project had started that way, the whole thing would have taken a different path. Because the, the criteria for approving a rental project, forgive me because I feel like I'm treading into a little bit of uncharted water for an assessor, but the approval project, the approval process for a project where there is going to be a large parcel, multiple building rental is a different process.
He's not doing a single parcel.
Right, because he's already started going left and now he would like to go right. But if he wanted to go right first, it was a different path to go right.
But he's not combining those into a single parcel. He has not come in for an application.
I understand that.
To be subdivided, this development. The subdivision stands as it is. It's really just a courtesy. He didn't even need to come by, he could have just done this amount to him. He would have never known the difference.
I don't know, I would have, I would have.
But it doesn't matter. It is approved as a subdivision that has two unit townhouses that straddle the. It is approved as a subdivision that has two unit townhouses that straddle the property on a file map. If he wants to modify that map, he has to go through the process of re-subdividing the subdivision.
That's correct.
At that point, you would have to say no.
No, I wouldn't.
The intent is, this is what it's supposed to be. Because that means, then you're going into the area where you're saying that now you're doing dedicated activity. But right now, as it stands, he doesn't even need to be here. He can just build the houses and run them off. There's nothing that says he can't do that.
And as far as assessment is concerned, you're gonna assess those properties as individual properties.
Yes, I will.
So, where's the burden on taxpayers? He's a taxpayer. He's gonna pay your taxes on those properties. So, there's no burden on the rest of the town to maintain the roads and whatnot. I mean, that's, it, there's, he's right. He does not even have to be here.
The precedent is, Waterview and Willow Point, after thirty some, after thirty some years...
Totally different project. He came in, he changed everything. He made it a rental community. You keep calling it a rental community, it is not a rental community.
I believe that's what he's...
It's a privately owned...
It is privately owned technically by this singular owner. However, this parcel went through a pretty robust rezoning process in several meetings and it was always pitched as an owner occupied development. Now, if he wanted a rental throughout that approval process, I think we would end up with a much different product than what we're looking at.
I agree with that.
So, again, are we re-subdividing his entire development into a single parcel with all the children in it?
He had no intention of doing that.
The residential tax...
We have a subdivision as stands.
Right.
All the parcels are gonna be two-ten parcels, right? That's it, single level?
Yes.
Okay, so there they are. It's not gonna change.
No.
They're not gonna be four-ten's?
Right, and then, once, once he starts to rent them, where is the obligation for him to file the HOA? And where is the obligation for him to sell them?
He has no obligation to file an HOA because it was not made a condition of approval for the rental. Unfortunately, it should've been. Because of a problem of individual homeowners and a joint building, count, count the wall, one owner puts a new roof on, the other one doesn't. That's a problem from the original approval of this development. We're not here tonight to say, okay, we're gonna undo that initial approval and say you must form an HOA. We could strongly advise would be a really good idea for that.
I think you do want to have that.
To avoid this situation. But, we're not in a position to say that because this is not an application for realty subdivision. This is just so in covenant and courtesy saying, you know, second running of properties. Okay, fine, there isn't anything in the code that says he can't. The only thing it says in the code about rentals, you can't rent for less than, what's it, 28 days? That's for one, one month, we sell. We have to rely on the lease agreement that he has with his tenants for his quittees. So, let him maintain the property or whatever it is that the lease agreement has.
I've got a question for you. John, do you have these anywhere else?
I have, I have, in Greece, I have all in peace, like you just talked about.
A similar type situation?
Yeah. No, 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 it's all one, it's an apartment, apartment.
Oh, okay, so...
So, you know what I'm talking about?
So, you with that?
Yeah.
One duplex.
Yeah, but that's not my intention. My intention is to be a regular subdivision, but the option to...
But, but the market is, is very favorable right now. What, I, I heard your introduction say that with the market increasing and that you'd rather rent. I'm, I'm lost at that.
I think it's like to have the flexibility. I think Tom has the intent to sell, that's why he went through this process. If he wanted a different project, he wouldn't have built a road to town standard, with the equipment, dedicated sewers, water main, and increased his expenses, a lot more than it could've benefited with rental. And he just wants the flexibility, knowing that interest rates are rising, costs are rising, there's demand now, so he wants to build them and hopefully get them occupied and sell as many as possible. But again, I don't think this was ever set up as a rental community. At the time, you've done, how many, 120 lots, just down the road on Phillips and Schlebel, and that turned out to be a pretty good development. So, I think he's, he's, you know, earned some respect in the town that he's not coming in trying to, you know, pull the wool over the town and say, we're, try to sneak one by and get the best of both worlds or continue to. You know, he is, you know, each parcel will pay their taxes, whether it's Tom or 66 individual owners are going to pay their taxes, which pays for the town, for the roads, for the stormwater, for, for all the town facilities, so. And again, if, if the opportunity arises where he can sell the property, you know, I think he will. Just wanting the flexibility to, what he certainly didn't want to do is, is build 66 units and not be able to be CFO because, you know, we just assumed we could do one thing or we couldn't. So, again, you know, Tom's willing to, to go the extra step with the HOA to, you know, further prove that it's gonna be a quality development for the town. And if the opportunity arises to sell it, I think he will. But again, wanted to discuss this with the town and, and, you know, make sure it works, banking ourselves a little bit.
So, it's not your intention to do that for year upon year for, I mean, you're waiting to play out the market, right? But, but it's not your intention to be a landlord to these 66 lots long-term?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that for sure yet, but, you know, if I could sell them, as long as we can make a decent profit, I will be selling them. And again, I have that HOA, but once I start selling them, I have that HOA.
Right. Are, are you gonna build all 66 at once?
Not, you know, one after the other, but progressively, yes. I would hope to build them all out in the next one to two years.
Instead of building them in sections, they're like one section's done, just start another section.
And it is the section.
And it's, well, this is the section, it's a real issue, where you sold one unit, but you haven't sold the other unit, you know, they're under contract, so, you know, do you not build the building at all until both units are under contract? This way, you could build it, if somebody wanted to buy the unit, you could build a whole building and lease out one. So, it just offers up more flexibility.
And, and my bankers tell me they're expecting interest rates of what, lease another one and a half percent by the end of the year. So, as the interest rates go, go up, you know, buyers slow down. So, my goal is to just, you know, hopefully build one after the next and build a project, build all 66 of them. I'm guessing it'll take a year to two years.
Well, I, so, the one, I, I agree with what you guys have just said, I've been saying the same thing for the past few weeks. I don't know what the alternative is. If, Dave, you're right, I use the same scenario, if you build a house, you build five houses, you can't tell a person you can't rent them. That's the right you have.
Well, there's only individual lots.
Well, that was what we talked about originally, that they, I stay on individual tax accounts. We agreed to that. In other words, wasn't looking to convert it into a townhouse project, you know what I mean? Under one...
One large parcel.
Correct. The goal wasn't to do that. I hear Donna, I hear what you're saying, I don't know...
I don't want to suggest either that Waterview had this intention.
I'm sorry, Donna.
I don't want to suggest either that Waterview ever had the intention of not carrying through with what their plans are. So, what we're seeing is sometimes, as time goes by, plans will change, right? So, they had set it up as individual ownership, they left the HOA off of it, and they could've sold them, but they had individual lots, right? And then, then through conversations with my officer, she said, pick, pick what you're doing. Are you renting or are you selling? And they wanted to have that flexibility back and forth. I don't think they ever foresaw, they were standing here at the beginning of their project, much like you are today, I don't think that they ever foresaw that 30 years later, they would still be renting them. They never, I don't, I can't speak for them, I wasn't hearing that 30 years ago. But, it turned out, 30 years later, they're still right where they never hoped to be. So, I'm just, I'm putting that caution before them.
That plays an issue from the beginning, I can tell you that. There were three different developers in there and they had whole processes there, and one wasn't any better than the next. So, as a result of that, the way that thing came down, there's no way in hell, you would've moved in there and bought a place. So, that, the intent was to sell. Davies, Davies, that's the guy that built that goofy looking thing in there, wasn't it? Cliff Davies, I can...
Yeah, three-story, yeah.
Oh, I remember that, I even remember practice this morning.
He's a divorcee.
But, it turned out to be a nightmare, that building. And, you know, they were for sale, these were like the ultimate. Nobody ever bought anything in there. And that's why, there was nothing they could do with that, that thing was falling apart. That's why they had three different developers in that project. They just went the hell on a handcart over there. I think, I think what we're dealing with there, I think what we're dealing with there is a little bit more reputable situation than what that one was. Again, that's some history of that over there.
And I'm not comparing, I'm not comparing the reputations, please don't take offense. You just, you, you come across these things and sometimes you go, whoa, wait a minute, what compels that forward in the direction in which it was intended originally? What compels it forward in that direction?
See, the way I look at it, it's an actual 66 lot subdivision. You know, you overhand laid the bylaw in there and there's no restriction that you can't lease it if it's your property. Just an intent, you know, on dedicated roads, you know, with the payment taxes, just like any other owner.
I think too, when you came in originally on this, one of the stipulations was that it would be duplexes and not fourplexes. And I think I used the scenario of railroad crossing. The duplexes over there and how they sold like hotcakes over there, they went, they were used right away, still a really nice project. You build four units, you build a four-unit. I buy this one, you buy that one, what do we do with these? Nobody wants them, but you gotta do them all, so these ended up being rentals. And that's what happened over there. And that's why I was dedicating, remember at the meeting when you guys came in, I just, no way you wanted a C fourplex, and we all agreed, you know, duplexes, and it worked out. I, I don't, I'm not seeing the, I'm not seeing the same issues with that, personally.
The only safe pair that would want to see is an HOA.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
That's it, other than that, everything stays the same.
Yeah.
And he sells them, he sells them, he runs them, he rents them, but he's paying the taxes on them, so.
So, what, what would be the, what would be the issue with it? If, if we go along with this like this, that like we're just talking?
I just don't want to see many years from now, where no one anticipated or thought about it at this particular moment in time, that if that doesn't happen, the town would end up with a rental community with dedicated roads, and you don't have any of those, there's reasons for that. Some of those are outside my parameters to be able to explain to you this evening, but it doesn't look like a rental community. And if it ends up staying that way, through no intention of their plans at the moment, which we've seen before, right, then that, that's going to become a problem.
I don't see a problem.
Well, then if the developer, the rental property would very much like to have the roads dedicated and filed by the town and their infrastructure purchased by the town and maintained, that's what you have, that's what you would have.
These, these are, they really own units. Because, Tom pays for the infrastructure he built, Tom takes ownership of it.
That's what I mean. When the town, you would dedicate it to the town.
Right.
And you've built it to certain standards, so that you would be able to do that. I understand, yes.
And then, you know, the individual tax lots would be paying for the infrastructure for the town, or...
It goes into the whole pool.
Right. By a one, he can't say no to anybody.
That's right. He's 100% right when he says he doesn't have to be here, okay? So, if, if he were to accommodate us and do the HOA, I think that's a major plus, and whether it's owned or rented or whatever, it's gonna be maintained, taxes are gonna be the same as the individually owned units, and they're gonna be individual. So, I, I don't see a problem with this whatsoever.
So, what mechanism do you propose to require the HOA?
Well, right now, in Trent, we're planning, we're, we're looking at the project. He had before us a request for site plan modification to allow rental of townhouses. The approval of this project never had a stipulation of sale or rental. So, just requesting site plan modification, we're actually not modifying anything. So, we have no action to take.
Yes, there was no physical modification, but the project as originally proposed was owner occupied, that's what was said when the rezoning was approved.
None of the approvals for the subdivision stipulate owner occupied. There's nothing in the record that says it must be owner occupied. So, we are not modifying the plan. This is a subdivision that came in, was approved as a subdivision. Right now, we are not seeing a request to re-subdivide the entire parcel, that's not what's before us. That's speculation of what they have next week. They'll have a bond next week, but there's a right back.
But as someone who's gonna have to deal with the implications of this situation...
Well, there is, there is many implications on it, because these are all individual parcels. There is nothing that we are modifying. There is nothing that was ever approved by ourselves, there was nothing as far as I saw in the minutes for the town board, that said approval subject to sale only. They didn't say that in any resolution.
No, it was not a condition, but it was...
Because it can't, it can't say that. Well, it was asked, that's nice. It doesn't have any, it doesn't have any standard. You had, you had these discussions about, okay, are you telling me that when I go out around to the town, we're just gonna want it? And you said you can't, this kind of issue. This, if a subdivision was filed and an easement sign up to the file, it's individual lots that have two unit townhouses that straddle the property. Nothing for us to modify, there's no action for us to take. None whatsoever. It's appreciated that Worcester Towns is gonna put an HOA to cover the issue of shared maintenance of these family next to buildings. You know, it's, it's basically doing that, but what grounds do we have at this point to modify, to require that?
Initially, he wouldn't need an HOA no matter what, he's gonna rent them, you know, either way, we're needed.
We don't have any grounds to...
But if, if we can get him to agree, and that would be just for protection, so the town didn't get calls from applicants later who rent them, is to agree to form an HOA on that site, once you start selling any units in there, something like that, I think that would...
I would be appreciative of that. I would want that anyways, you know, just for the protection of potential buyers.
But as long as he's maintaining them himself, doesn't mean anything.
Right.
Well, this is what, what we're all saying, the same thing, is what we've been saying from right on. I don't like comparing it to Willow Point, that was a clustered...
That project, that project is done and overruled. Neither of those projects are performed before at this point in time. We're not reviewing those, we're not looking back in time to change anything. We are looking at the project that was reported at hand, and that is requesting modification for rental instead of sales. And it's a modification that was not applicable because there's never a condition...
See, when that started, Oriole's were the original, Oriole and Terry were the ones that started that project. And the intent then, they started at the road there, remember, do you remember that? And see, that started over there to be for sale units. Well, they sold a couple of them, you know, just to get it going. Didn't take them long to go bust, they went belly up on that project right away. Then, then Cliffy, he took that over. And then he had it, he messed it up even deeper. And then Mark Four came in and completed the project and that turned it into a total nightmare at that point.
But the only modification, if that came in and said, I modified my plan to be a rental community, not do it under one, one account number.
Correct.
That's a modification.
That's...
We're not doing it, we're not doing that. And he's right, there's, there's actually no action we can take.
Wow.
And I'm a neighbor of that project, by the way. I live four doors away from it, so, you know... I live four doors away from it, so, you know.
I assure you, these are gonna be very high-end, very classy.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I would agree. Rentals on that are gonna be range, you know, for.
Well, rentals for that type of unit are between fifteen hundred and two thousand a month.
You wouldn't be able to rent it for two fifteen hundred. You wouldn't be able, am I right?
My guess is.
Two grand?
Eighteen hundred to two thousand.
Yeah. Get one up, I gotta move in. Getting tired of mowing lawn. All right, where are we going here?
I think right now, I'm in.
In agreement with what he's proposing to do and request it. You can't even make that a legal thing, to form homeowners association. But I think in good faith, with his reputation, I think he would do it. He wants the project to work too.
Well, we can ask him to put it on the record that he agrees to put an HOA in this room. Doesn't have to be a stipulation.
That's what.
Just have it on the record.
That he's, he's agreeing to, yeah, that's a good idea. If the equipers agree with any sale of units, then form an HOA. No, no. All right, I don't know what else we can do, that's.
I would just want to clarify, I only said any sale, any sale except for myself or. In other words, any sale to somebody except myself. In other words, could everyone be sold, me?
Yeah, you know what I mean, once, once, outside of you, once they become people moving in other than yourself, yeah. For sale, yeah, that would, yeah. Yeah, but as long as you're owning them, and if you got them for a couple of years, well, whenever you got it up, you're gonna take care of the lawn and everything yourself. That's all your, they're all your yards. It's the only way I can say it. Okay?
I remember what I'm working for.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm sorry. To address your concern as it relates to that other development of commitment not to consolidate into a single tax parcel, maintain a separate individual tax parcel.
They already are in it.
But they are, but they're just a commitment somewhat to.
Well, if he wanted to do that, he would have to come back to this board to do that. Which would be denied.
Okay, all right. Any comments, you guys?
Well, I shouldn't have do nothing.
That's about where it is, really. All right, just a second. All right, I guess, oh, I'm sorry. You had the application in?
No, I just signed, I'll get.
I'm sorry?
I just signed, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, come on up.
Hi, my name is Janice Chapman, and I don't actually know what I'm gonna say, except to say that I've lived in this town for twenty years, and I'm a hall, to what I see. I live on West Over Drive. When I bought that property, when I bought that property, it was sold to me as for our green. I understand that that wasn't probably legal to do. But I bought the house thinking it was, and of course, now it's apartment city behind my home. I have a street behind my home that is not far from my property. It's virtually a postage stamp that I have for a backyard. The number of times I have called the cops for all the motorcycles that cruise up and down that street, they don't pay any attention to the speed limit, nor do the cars.
I'm sorry, no, you, where on West Over Drive?
West Over Drive, over here behind the ESL credit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? I deal with that, my quality of life in my home has tanked, as have all of us that order that street. I have been told, who have I been told this by, perhaps, maybe you should take a move in? No, I'm thirteen payments away from owning my home. I'm a teacher, I'm going to own that home. But shame on everybody, and if this board is the group of people who just allow everything and anything to be built, shame on all of you for not taking into consideration this town, what is best for this town. You talked about a goofy building, whatever that building is. How about the eyesore and the monstrosity that is being built right now behind Brewster's Ice Cream? Like, everybody needed a storage unit, and a monstrous one at that. Now, thank God I don't live in those apartments, but apparently, none of you cared what they're now wanting to look at.
Let me just interrupt you a second, before you get to comparing your opinion with this.
I don't think I'm caring anyway, I speak for a lot of Webster residents. I just have the guts to do it.
What would you, what would you do with a project like that, storage facility?
How about not give it permission to be built? It's an eyesore.
Now, how about the people that own the property for twenty years? Mom and pop wanna go on vacation, now they're selling their property. That is their life savings. What do we tell the people? You can't, we're not gonna let you sell your property.
We're not gonna let you sell your property. Well, I'm looking at the sign behind you, sir, where life is worth living. You have a jiffy hook. I'll get to that. In a circuitous manner, if you'd allow me. Life is not very worth living for any of us in this corridor that you have allowed to be built to the moon and back. And I'm guessing probably none of you live there, because none of you care. But I do, and a lot of us do. And the Jiffy Lube that's going down here, everybody's really not too pleased with that. And how about, you know, if you, if you go, if you go to Pittsburgh, I bet we could all agree that that's a lovely town. Let's not play games. It is.
Really?
Webster is not, and everybody would tell you that, I'm sorry to say. Again, I'm in the community, I'm a teacher, I, I hear, everybody talks. Nobody's thrilled with the direction that this town has taken. But if, if any of you, if I ask any of you, do you live on this corridor? I guarantee the answer is no, because you wouldn't allow this to be built up the way it is. Sorry?
Can you understand zoning?
Zoning, not probably like you do, but I think I would've done a better job. I do.
So, the zoning you have allows certain developments.
Is what?
Zoning allows various types of development.
Okay.
And even developments you see don't have applied to that zoning, so it's allowed.
So, so I don't know what Pittsburgh is, I don't know what Fairwood is.
I don't know about Pittsburgh, because we're not Pittsburgh.
Okay, but maybe, maybe you should look at whatever their zoning codes are, because somebody's doing it well and somebody's not. Again, there's room for growth, correct? Somebody's doing it well and somebody's not.
Well, that's, you know what, that's your opinion.
It is, it is, but when I'm looking at an ice cream store, a storage unit, a funeral home, a McDonald's, there's no rhyme or reason to what's going on there.
Give me a chance now, we want you to talk. You're complaining about that building going up there, and I gave you a scenario. Farmer sells his property, that's his income, that's his livelihood. He didn't get a teacher's benefits, he didn't get working zero hours.
He didn't work my thirty years of killing myself at my job, he should be a teacher.
Yeah, my daughter misses serving that. So, the person sells their piece of property, it's zoned a certain way, there's a lot of use for it, and they sell it to somebody that wants to buy it, this is their pension.
Where is the town buying any land to keep it green? I'm asking where the town is in buying property to keep it green. You have more deer accidents in this town.
Tell me what you think, Webster has more space than any other town in one of our towns.
True story for that? Let's revisit that in five years, because it's not moving on those. But do you know where more deer accidents are? Not ironically, as you might think, do you know where most deer accidents are?
I think, you know what we're gonna do here, we're gonna, I'm gonna.
We're gonna table it, I'm sure. I just wanna finish that it's in Webster, because you haven't given animals a corridor here. You've built up so much that animals don't even have a place to go. And so, this little, this little hallmark here with the sailboat and the trees, I wish actually that you guys all cared about animals and people and found a balance, and there isn't even that. So, no, it's not worth living.
Well, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We have years' time now.
I'm making a motion to approve the lease from April the fifth. I ask presenters, I have seen.
All in favor?
I think so.
She answered the question, no way. What is going at a piece of property? That scenario is locked up. You own a piece of property and then it comes up with it.
Those properties where she is, she probably bought that property for seven hundred dollars. Today she get honored somebody, and that's how with the road being built.
We're gonna sell them.
Well, this was interesting.
Well, you know what, what you guys were talking about, it's the same thing I talked to Josh about. Going through the whole thing, feeling the same thing, you can't stop us from renting. He has the right to rent them.
Well, we did this, and after we sold them, it was a little.
So you didn't go to the school for it?
No, but my wife was. When you get in there.
You like the way they run them?
No.
They're a bunch of Democrats. Evil, evil people.
Well, they're, the way they.